Welcome to the Planning Commission for the City of Royal Oak. Let's introduce ourselves, starting to my left.
Gary Casada.
Dan Goddick.
Charlotte Douglas, Mayor Pro Tem.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twining, Director of Community Development.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Next item of business is under Item B, Approval of Minutes. The first item is the June 25, 2018 work session with the City Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Goddick. Support?
Second.
Support by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion on this, on these minutes?
None.
Not seeing all those in favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item of business is the approval of minutes for Planning Commission meeting on August 14. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved. So moved.
Moved by Mr. Casada. Support?
Support.
Or Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on these? Okay, not seeing all those in favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, next item is, this is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, not seeing. We'll close the public comment on non-agenda items. And let's go to old business. Now, Tim, remind me, this was a public hearing.
And you opened it again. This is the third meeting it's been at. I think the intent was to continue the public input because you asked that we invite additional individuals to attend the meetings.
Okay. Okay, so this is a continued public hearing. It's a zoning ordinance, text amendment for food trucks and temporary transit outdoor sales. Mr. Twining?
Well, I think the Planning Commission is well aware of the amendment. As I said, you've seen it on two prior occasions. This will be the third meeting. We have not made any changes since the first draft that was prepared. The one question that I would point out under definitions, the temporary transit outdoor sales, there was a question last meeting about a sentence in there that said, limited it to persons other than the owner and occupant of the premises. I think if you want to strike that, I can find no particular reason to limit it to non-property owners in terms of the temporary transit outdoor sales. I think what staff was thinking at the time, there's a separate provision in the ordinance regarding outdoor sales and displays for other particular type of operation. And between the two of them, we thought it had covered, but they're really different type uses. So, other than that one sentence, or portion of the sentence, I don't have any changes at this point. Again, we're still looking for staff, or from Planning Commission input and a recommendation to the City Commission on this text amendment. Very briefly, what I'll remind everyone is, staff was asked to draft an ordinance that would allow food trucks, as defined, in the ordinance, in the central business district. And in order to do that, we separated food trucks out of how they were previously treated as transient merchant sales. Because currently, unless this ordinance is adopted, food trucks are not allowed, and neither are transient merchants in the CBD. They're only allowed in the commercial zoning districts outside. Having said that, under the provisions in the back of this ordinance, there's very limited number of situations and standards or conditions that are referenced to where they would potentially be permitted in the CBD. So that's the basic intent and purpose of the ordinance. I won't walk through it in its entirety again, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Twining. Are there any questions? Mr. Goddick, and then Mr. Casada.
Just real quick, Tim, you mentioned that you wanted that sentence striked about owners of the property not using the truck. I didn't understand the rationale for doing that.
Well, at the last Planning Commission meeting, staff was asked why we were limited it to persons other than the owner of the property. So I went back and looked, and kind of looked through a reason. If you read the way it's defined, under temporary and transit or outdoor sales in the definition, Section 7708, if you read that sentence, it says, "Commercial activities conducted outside of an enclosed building on a non-permanent basis." And that's fine. But then it goes on to say, "By persons other than the owner or occupant of the premises." So we were taking somebody who was owning it from being able to have a transient activity.
So the owner could do that, or non-owner, when we take it out?
Yes. Either.
Okay. I thought maybe the original intent was that the owners of properties just don't buy a truck and leave it on site all the time.
Well, this definition is in relation to transient outdoor sales and temporary. It's not the definition of food trucks. The definition of food trucks is up above.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Casada?
I'll just follow up on that, because it was my question. Actually, the way I was concerned, because I read this to say, a person who is the owner of the property is not subject to this section, which I don't think was the intent. The intent is that these requirements in 77069 would apply. The way I read this is if the owner did it themselves, they wouldn't apply. I don't think that was the intent, but that's how I read it. So I think it is proper to take that sentence out.
No, the way the zoning ordinance is set up is, you can't, you, all normal commercial activities are conducted with inside an enclosed building. You as a property owner, or you as the landlord, may have a tenant with a leasehold arrangement. Everything in most of the commercial districts is permitted to occur within an enclosed building. Then there are very few circumstances where you can have an outdoor activity, aside what cafes, outside cafes, outdoor sales and displays at English Gardens or Myers. They're very limited. Every other outdoor activity, pumpkin sales, Christmas trees, were treated as transient merchants. It was a temporary or seasonal activity. All of that was lumped in together, including food trucks, because it was temporary, it's non-permanent. So they were treated under that one umbrella. What we're doing here is separating that. By adding this sentence, I think what it did was, say, the owner of the property couldn't run the pumpkin sales, couldn't run the Christmas tree sales.
Just food trucks.
So if we strike it, it doesn't matter. And frankly, from a zoning standpoint, it really doesn't matter who owns it and runs it. It's the use, so I don't see a need for that particular part of the sentence.
Yeah, I agree. It shouldn't matter who runs it. I agree.
Any other questions for Ms. Douglas?
So, do we have a sense of how many properties meet the very narrow criteria here for a food truck use in the downtown zoning?
Well, it's not necessarily a question of how many currently meet it. It's potential that many more in the future could. Circumstances change, and people or businesses could facilitate a change in operation to comply. So even though there might be one or two today, potentially you could have 10 at some point. I mean, whatever the market might bear.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Casada?
And I will have some other questions, but I'd like to hear from the public first.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Twining? Okay, not seeing. Is there someone here in the public that would like to speak on this? If so, just raise your hand, and I'll call you up. And by the way, we have, you each have three minutes. Yes, sir, in the back. Just your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Bob Morton. I live at 305 Oakdale in Royal Oak, where my wife and I have raised our family over the last 24 years. In addition, I've had a business here in Royal Oak for the last 20 years, and have also been honored to serve on the DDA, the parking, the master plan, and school consolidation committees over the years. And as a stakeholder, our current community's current and future success truly is important to me. Regarding the proposed change of the ordinance that would allow these liquor-licensed establishments who choose not to have kitchens to bring in food trucks to attract customers, I'm looking for clarification from you. Is this about helping current businesses succeed, or is it about having food trucks downtown because they are trendy and some folks may think that they're cool? It's my understanding that the intent of this proposal is to help two of our fellow stakeholders, Motor City Gas and River Rouge Brewing Company, continue to grow, and that without this change, their future success is somehow in doubt. And, you know, speaking of success, I had a chance to go by Rich's Place the other day, and I want to congratulate them on, you know, their half-million-dollar expansion. That building looks great. I think Fourth Street, you know, is really looking good. And I just read in the paper that Ed, you know, from River Rouge, also do congratulations, opening up a second business in Oak Park, another brewery. So I think that's great, and I think it speaks to the type of business people these folks are, and why I'm proud to be, you know, a stakeholder along with them. But if it's truly the case that these businesses feel that offering food to their guests is now an important part of their business models, many of the existing downtown businesses are ready and eager to help. Over a dozen restaurants have indicated the desire to work together to create co-op catered or cooking events on-site with these businesses. Other businesses are willing to offer direct delivery. Some already do in the downtown. And then, in addition to that, if it's about food, delivery services like DoorDash, Grubhub, Uber Eats are exploding in popularity. And they allow customers to enjoy food from anywhere in Metro Detroit at anybody's location. There are also simple and profitable strategies for offering food without building a kitchen. The office coffee shop comes to mind. They originally used a simple refrigerated self-serve case and bakery display to offer salads, sandwiches, baked goods, and snacks made by other local vendors. They didn't need to have a kitchen at that point. Ultimately, if you as a commission recommend that food trucks offer the only avenue for these businesses' success, why not continue to allow that to happen through the use of a special event permit? Knowing that all these things are available, please consider whether this proposal really is necessary, and weigh what its unintended long-term consequences may be. And I think that those questions were relevant that Tim brought up. While it appears to be very narrow in scope and only aimed at these specific businesses, in reality, none of us can predict the future. If adopted...
Sir, it's been three minutes now.
All right. Thanks very much.
Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir, in front.
It helped if that three minute actually ran, so I could see...
I agree. I agree.
Good evening. My name's Rich Lockwood. I'm a longtime Royal Oak resident, and along with my wife, Tanya, co-founder, owner, and master distiller of Motor City Gas. I can't address all of the questions in three minutes, but I'm going to try and get as much across here as I can. I'm here today to support the food truck ordinance and answer any questions that the commission might have. I believe this ordinance has been constructed in a way that protects the local restaurant community while making our town more business-friendly to a new red-hot industry of craft beverage manufacturers that bring excitement and tourism to the communities that they join. Our intent is to use this new ordinance to generate much-needed foot traffic to downtown Royal Oak via pop-up-style events at our distillery, and to make our city more business-friendly to a new breed of small artisan manufacturers like us. We at Motor City Gas have a long track record from day one of promoting Royal Oak, supporting local businesses, and collaborating with our neighbors. We even have a reputation for helping direct competitors. We often invite aspiring distillery entrepreneurs to come work with us. Rather than discourage competition, we encourage people to open their distilleries, even right here in Royal Oak. We've been working to try and bring new innovative industrial artists here. We regularly try to recruit businesses east Fourth Street, where we are located, and attempt to create what we envision as a craft manufacturing corridor. Most often, we reach out to producers, craft producers of spirits, beer, mead, wine, cider, sake, sochi, and kombucha, just to name a few. These small artisans like us typically do not make their own food for all of the same reasons that most restaurants typically don't make their own liquor. This ordinance will help bring these businesses to Royal Oak that almost always rely on food trucks to help subsidize their core business of manufacturing craft beverages. They use food trucks much the way that restaurants use third-party sourced liquor to help subsidize their core business of manufacturing food. This ordinance will also enable us to better compete with our competitors in progressive cities like Ferndale and Detroit, who currently use distilleries, who currently allow food trucks for their distilleries, breweries, meteries, and others like businesses. Today, I asked the Planning Commission's assistance to help us compete, to help us recruit, and to help us create a destination district on Fourth Street that makes people rethink Royal Oak as a progressive place to play and to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir, in the end. Just need your name?
My name's Timothy Barnes. I'm a longtime resident here in Royal Oak. I just simply wanted to address the basic misconception that these food trucks will take away from any of the local restaurant-style businesses. The concept, one of the concepts of having a food truck is to simply create a destination or an event-like atmosphere. We're not talking about replacing the local restaurants. We're talking about creating once or twice a month an event along the same lines that Royal Oak already hosts in many cases. You don't say about Arts Beats and Eats that it's taking away from the local restaurants. You say that it's bringing people down here to, in fact, introduce them to Royal Oak. And I think that is a key point to doing this sort of thing, as well as some of the issues brought up by the gentleman from Motor City Gas. It's simply just a benefit to Royal Oak to get people down here under almost any pretense. If they buy a pasty from a truck and then see that Mr. Bees is open for a restaurant after they've had a couple beers or whiskey at anywhere on Fourth Street that we're talking about, that's a great thing. That's the point. If they stay and walk around, that's the point. That is literally the whole gist of one of our biggest festivals, Arts Beats and Eats. I think the restaurants thinking that this is going to take away from them is a bit myopic, as well as aiding two local, well-known people here, who has already been acknowledged earlier, growing within their industry. You want to be not only a part of that, but a helping hand. We talked about some of the future possibilities, and that is excellent, but there's a lot to be said for helping the people, one or two, who are here now. Beyond that, you're creating an atmosphere that's welcoming to businesses, all businesses. You're aiding current businesses. And if any of the other restaurants want to get together and have a special liquor night, well, they actually do that. You can have any one of the vodka manufacturers come down, and they'll have some girls pass out shots and whatnot, and we've all heard about that. It's the same principle. They have every opportunity to engage local people, and many of them do. Ed's beer is served in many places here. That's great. And I'm sure he's open to having them cater certain institutes, you know, events. But just opening up to simple food trucks and simple events that they can run quickly and efficiently will aid the whole city now, as well as anyone future in the long term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Just your name, please?
Hello, my name is Tanya Lockwood. I'm a longtime Royal Oak resident, and along with my husband, co-founder of Motor City Gas. I'm here today to support the new food truck ordinance. We believe this ordinance will help businesses like ours to draw foot traffic to Royal Oak while attracting small craft beverage manufacturers like us to Royal Oak. We believe this ordinance contains very strict limitations that prevent any chance from being harmful to the local restaurant community. As downtown foot traffic continues to decline and doors continue to close, we believe that residents and businesses are ready for the fresh ideas this new ordinance brings. Downtown struggles are not just a problem for restaurants. It impacts all Royal Oak businesses and residents, especially those of us that own houses here. We believe the community as a whole should have a voice when it comes to making our town more artisan-business friendly. Here at Motor City Gas, we work hard to bring people to Royal Oak. We are part of a new rapidly growing tourist-centric industry. Since opening over three years ago, we've been fortunate to grow our business every month while averaging almost 50% new customers every year. Many of these patrons travel from far places like Traverse City, Grand Rapids, Chicago. Travel and Leisure Magazine recently named us as one of the top distilleries in the United States to visit. And when we begin statewide retail distribution of our Royal Oak-made whiskey next year, we expect to become an even larger tourist draw. We take pride in introducing people to Royal Oak, and we regularly recommend other establishments in town for places to eat, drink, shop, and play. There are many other artisans like us out there looking for a place to call home. We just need to make it easier for them to grow roots here. I believe we, as a business community, need to stop fighting with each other and start working together to compete with new rivals in emergent cities like Ferndale and Detroit. We need to stop pointing the finger at construction barrels and parking spaces and start collaborating to give people exciting reasons to try Royal Oak again. We need to be brave and welcome change to make our downtown adventurous again. Every artisan that left our city in recent years has taken a key piece of Royal Oak's identity with them. Much needs to be done, but this new ordinance is a step in the right direction. We need to get back to being a community that welcomes small progressive entrepreneurs with innovative retail businesses. Today, we ask for your help in taking a step forward to make Royal Oak an artisan-friendly city again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Your name, please?
Hi, my name is Elena Past. I'm a longtime resident of Royal Oak, and I live just around the corner on Kaiser Avenue. I'm a big fan of the Fourth Street corridor and the way that it's really starting to draw people to a new area of downtown. And I would just, I also teach at Wayne State University, so I see the action in Midtown daily. I'm also really committed to public transit and to mobility, and I think that food trucks are consistent with the kind of vision that I'm hearing from the Royal Oak Planning Commission and the city, and that are supported in the new transit initiatives that encourage people to explore the city on foot and to get to know the city by traveling around it on foot. I think food trucks encourage the kind of mobility and energy and creativity that are consistent with the city's plan by getting people out to places they haven't been or returning to places that they have been before. I also think that they're here to stay. I grew up in Texas, and Austin, Ann Arbor, Detroit, Ferndale, Seattle, all of the places that have a vibrant outdoor life are places where food trucks are exploding. So I encourage you not only to make food trucks a part of the city plan, but also to make sure that it's not too onerous for the kinds of businesses that are attracting the kind of life that I think is making our city increasingly vibrant, and Fourth Street in particular, a particularly exciting place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hello?
Hello, my name's Mark Schuster. I also like to encourage this food truck ordinance. Reading through it, it seems that some parts of it are rather onerous and are going to make it near impossible to really jump through all the hoops to make it happen. So I really like to see some of those things made a little easier for the businesses that would like to do that, would like to bring in and host these food trucks, even if it's just a couple times a year, four times a year, as Tim said, once or twice a month. To go through and jump through all these hoops at that frequency, and the requirements that seem to be built into this ordinance seem rather extensive and overdone, almost to the point of trying to exclude them from coming in. And I found it interesting, as I was reading through some of the letters that were submitted, and with the one from the Royal Oak Restaurant Association, signed by all the restaurants, and the last line says, "Loyal to the businesses that have roots and personal stake in the community." And I know there are several of these restaurants that do have ownership right in the city, but I think of the 32, that's definitely the minority. And with the Downtown Development Authority having a unanimously-approved letter here, I'm curious if they, really, if that was unanimous for the entire DDA, if they really talked to the other businesses that they're supposed to represent when they might have made suggestions on how to write this ordinance. And then, the Chamber of Commerce trying to get consensus out of 17 people, I wonder if any of them were non-restaurant owners. It just seems like a lot of very biased input on this ordinance. But other than that, like I say, it just seems like a very onerous undertaking to get a food truck to come into a business, and I do believe that that should be made easier so that some of these small businesses, liquor licenses, this seems to be the main focus of this, but even businesses that don't have a liquor license, if saying namaste wants to bring in for a client celebration, client thank you, to bring something, I don't know if that would fall under this as well, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Martha Stensel, and I am Edward's wife, so we own River Rouge Brewing Company. All I hear, and this is my very personal perspective, I hear all these arguments, and they are based out of fear, right? Fear that we're going to lose clients, customers, fear that it's going to happen this. And it is my personal belief and my experience that any decisions that are made out of fear are never good decisions, right? So when Edward and I moved from California to here, you know, we went around all the different neighborhoods, and we were very deliberate in choosing where we wanted to establish ourselves. And one of the things that draws to this region, to this city, was because at that time, it seemed like Royal Oak was on its track to become a very progressive, innovative, artsy, you know, kind of community. And that's why we decided to establish here and, you know, even further establish our business. It is kind of sad what is happening in the downtown area. I see the comparison when we first moved here with Ferndale, and how much more they have moved in it all about attracting people, different businesses, and there's a lot of sense of inclusion and diversity in their downtown area. I don't see that here. I really think that somebody said, you know, it's up to the market to decide. Let people decide. One of the things is, we haven't even tried this, and we're already saying that it's going to steal from other people's business. People that are going to a food truck are not necessarily the kind of people that will go to a restaurant. That's very different. Or maybe, once they come in here, and as, you know, somebody else said, they create a destination. Our businesses, Motor City Gas and us, believe it or not, we bring people to Royal Oak, to our business, and then they get to see the community. And I think anything that we're basing just on fear is not going to be a good decision. Put the opportunity for people to, you know, have that option, and then let's see if the option works, right? So we may bring the trucks, and maybe nobody comes. And there you go, right? But let people the opportunity. I feel that, you know, a lot of stuff is just done behind, and people are not even aware that they were taking, you know, decisions were taken, and they were not given the opportunity. So all I want is for people to have an open mind, let the market decide, that I know it's everybody's opportunity to have a business and cooperate. We make beer, we don't make food, we want to give the other business the opportunity. So, thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Edward Stensel. I'm, my wife just spoke. I'm the co-owner of River Rouge Brewing Company and resident here in Royal Oak, right on Main Street. Obviously, I think food trucks are a good thing. I'm in favor of them. I've looked at the proposal, and I think it's something in the right direction. I have to ask the question, though, as I think my wife just mentioned, it seems like it's trying to be too narrow, and that is a question of, are we just trying to make this for Rich, and Tanya, and myself, and Martha, our businesses? Are we trying to make this something that's available in the future for other businesses? And I'd ask the question, particularly on Section, was it H, where it gets into the terminology of the specifications of where the food truck can be. Aren't there a lot of restaurants, and I guess they're mainly restaurants because they're serving food, that get permits annually to use the sidewalk? And I believe these table... And I believe these tables where people are eating and drinking are definitely closer than 10 feet to the exit of the business or 10 feet to the sidewalk, which they're right next to. And I can't help but wonder, you know, these restrictions to exactly where a food truck can be and where the tables can be and all these things, aren't just there to completely make it next to impossible for food trucks to exist, even in, you know, in limited areas that we're trying to make them? Also, you know, we do have food trucks that come to the farmer's market, which to me, ultimately does not really help my business or I don't think it really helps Rich's business. It makes it a nice destination for locals, but a lot of our customers complain, they're like, well, why can't you get a food truck here? Why do we have to walk over there? We'd like to, you know, try them. And that's something that I think that the food trucks at the farmer's market doesn't really help. And I don't think it helps, it takes away from local businesses and it's not really helping us. So I think this ordinance, in principle, would start helping if it had a little bit more wording that would make it possible to actually have food trucks in a few other places. So I could go on, I know that a lot of people say that we're taking, that we want to take business away from other restaurants and businesses and that's furthest from the truth. I've supported them, my wife supported them, we support local businesses whenever we can. We're very happy living here in Royal Oak and we want the town-
Sir, it's been three minutes now.
Okay, thank you. We want the town to prosper. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing you. Closed public hearing and let's bring it back to the commission for some more discussion or any questions. Mr. Goddick.
Since we have a couple of prime examples in the audience tonight, like River Rouge, the ordinance that I'm reading, it says that the truck has to be on private property. Is that correct, Mr. Twing?
That's correct.
Ken?
I know this is conjecture, but where would they park?
You can't park on Fourth.
I don't know. That would be up to them to submit a site plan and tell us where they're going to park it.
I have a question about that, too. I have a question about H1, 2, and 3.
Well, let me start out with, the zoning ordinance deals with private property. If it were city policy to allow food trucks in the public right-of-way, like they do sidewalk cafes, then you don't need this ordinance.
Okay.
The city commission decided a while ago as city policy to allow sidewalk cafes to encroach into the sidewalk and those are all done under a license agreement with the city and have insurance. They have to submit plans and they're renewed on an annual basis and they pay a fee based on the size and those sorts of things. So it's a different animal. If your indication is to allow them in the public right-of-way, the planning commission has no jurisdiction over the public right-of-way. So not that I want to stop conversation in that regard, but it's not relevant to your purview.
That was going to be my question because I was wondering if they could pull the food truck up in a parking spot in front of their establishment and for a period of, let's say an hour or two, serve some food and then pull out.
No.
Can they do that? Okay. And that's the public right-of-way?
Yes.
And we don't have purview over allowing that?
No.
Okay. So when you set this up, wrote this up, that was based on those-
Again, staff was directed to put something together to allow food trucks on private property under certain circumstances.
Okay.
There was a lot of discussion, it probably commented about three or four times a year. The city also allows special event permits that allow, arts, beats, and eats occurs under an agreement and a special event permit. It doesn't need an ordinance amendment to allow it to occur on a regular basis. The distinction I will make, Dream Cruise is a special event and all of the property owners submit a special event permit to put tents on their site for that one day. Nothing out there complies with city zoning codes and uses. What we're talking about here is amending the zoning ordinance that would allow any property owner the right to put food trucks on their property under these provisions once they comply with them. And it's not a question of River Rouge Brewery and Motor City Gas. It's anyone that falls within these criteria and can meet it, come to you for an approval. It would occur on their property based on an approved site plan and an approved special event, approved special land use permit, which are different animals, occur whenever they wanted to do it, not when the city said you've got a special event permit for next weekend. There's a big distinction on what this ordinance amendment does versus other things that are already available.
So if Smith's Brewer just owns the building, they won't have any place to put a food truck on their private property? Wouldn't it-
I don't know, maybe. I, you know, what somebody does with their property wants to have an opportunity to put a truck on it, I don't know.
Okay.
They could drive it inside perhaps and leave, I, you're asking me to speculate once I write an ordinance, what somebody's going to attempt to do to meet it.
Okay. Mr. Casada.
Well, I just want to talk about that point. The way I see this is that the difference in the main is that the special event permits are a one-off thing and if I understand correctly, they don't have to adhere to the zoning ordinances that you just talked about because they're not permanent. But we would have an ordinance like this, the party who owns the property and permits this, this would be, this could be an ongoing thing. They could have it 365 days a year. So if you're going to have a food truck sitting there, a vehicle there with food and potential garbage and weathering and all sorts of things, I think that it's appropriate, I think it's appropriate that we're here as a commission to promote good design, the master plan, the benefit of the whole community. I think if somebody's going to have a permanent or semi-permanent installation, then it should meet a higher standard. I think if somebody's going to have it a couple of times a year, then we cut them slack and we let them do it. That's what I understand. Am I correct?
Basically. They still have to meet standards under the special event.
Some standards, some standards. But I went over and looked at the two facilities and I couldn't see how they could do it in either place, to tell you the truth. And maybe Motor City could do it, it'd be very tight. I don't see how the brewery could do it, but I don't know if you'd want a truck stuck in that little alleyway. And, you know, we also, you know, like I say, we want to keep those places clean. We don't, you know, adding extra garbage cans and who knows what the seating looks like. I mean, we are, we do want to promote artisans, we want to promote young, energetic businesses, but if you're going to do it on a daily basis in the town here, I think there has to be some standards. So I support, I just want to say, I support having these standards and of course, I think the planning commission can waive some of them, but if it's going to be there all the time, then we want it to look good and we want it to function good. We want it to be safe and we don't want rats and things like that. It's got to be clean and all that. So I want to, I just want to support this approach. If you're only going to do it a few times a year, the special event may be the way to go. And I've been to Motor City and there was a food event there and I don't think you had a food truck. I think you had a caterer coming. That worked pretty well. So I mean, there's different ways to do it. I have a bunch of other things to say, but I wanted to say that.
Mr. Goddick and then Ms. Douglas.
I used one of the people that commented, the businesses that commented, to try to get an example so I could better understand the ordinance and the intent of what we're trying to do. So I may go back to that even though it's, I, I'm reluctant to identify specific businesses because I don't want to create an issue for anybody here at the table. Being, having said that, pardon me, would a business under the ordinance be able to use an adjacent property with the permission of the adjacent property owners? Or would that adjacent property owner have to submit for this type of use?
Well, minimally, I would say they would have to, you'd run into some issues because keep in mind, one of the criteria that this is limited to is a facility that has the ability to sell alcohol on the site. You'd run into some issues under the plan of operation if you're on somebody else's property that's not covered by that license. So there's a lot of things where I'd say that might not be practical to have happen. On the other hand, if some, if one party owned the property and they leased the property from the other person and they added it to their plan of operation, then they might be able to, but you're, every situation is different. I don't really want to get into speculating what somebody might or might not do. I can answer questions on what the ordinance says until I get a plan and somebody's proposal. I really don't want to-
I understand and I appreciate you trying to answer my questions because they're not very specific. Is it also true with what Mr. Casada said as far as someone applying for this, that they could have food trucks basically unlimited day per year?
Well, basically the, and again, that's the difference between applying for a special event permit under those provisions and policies and what we're talking about here. Once you get this approved through the approval process, planning commission blesses a special land use permit, you approve their site plan, there might be an annual licensing thing, but for that year, you can do it whenever you want.
So they can have the truck as many times as a-
Certainly.
Okay.
I have a couple more, but I'll hold back.
Ms. Douglas?
So how does this affect non, other business zoning categories, not CBD? I mean, could a solely liquor, could a craft brewery on Woodward open in the parking lot of, you know, could budget run a car, become a liquor-serving place and add a food truck and inconvenience sign of the beef carer?
Well, I think the biggest distinction I would say there is that the CBD, the Central Business District, they're basically the area from 11 Mile to Lincoln West to roughly parts of Knowles and North Side or some parts of Fourth Street, it's not a straight line on the East Side, has precluded specifically, not allowed transient merchants in the CBD, primarily because there are very few spots that have private property to put temporary activities on outside without encroaching into the public right-of-way. There are very few. So when you ask me where can it occur, there are not many to start with. And so rather than dealing with variances, I think several years ago, frankly, since I've been here, that's been an ordinance provision. So that goes back to the early 90s and may have been in place prior to that, but, so this is a change to allow basically outside activities to occur. Some of the others, as I said, that have occurred are the outside cafes, but that's probably been pretty limited in what's there. In terms of outside the CBD, transient merchants were a permitted use in general business. Had nothing to do with whether they had liquor service or any other activity. If you wanted to, probably one of the most recent examples until it was redeveloped was the old Shell Station on Woodward. It had 24/7 transient activities, pumpkins, Christmas trees, flowers on the south end of the site that wasn't used by the gas station. And so, and then fireworks. Those are all covered under the transient merchant approvals. They all go through initially on the site, a special land use permit approved by the planning commission, site plan approval by the planning commission, and then annually they renew it under a license through the clerk's office. And as long as the plan is the same, they can run it all year long. Probably is the best example I can give you, or things like that. That's what this is coming out of. The only reason that we've separated food trucks from transient merchants is we're not allowing any other transient merchant to occur in the CBD. The only one that would fit in that category would potentially be food trucks under this operation. So you're not doing pumpkin sales, you're not doing Christmas tree sales.
So food trucks, as long as they meet site plan requirements, setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, are allowed in other business zoning districts?
As a special, yes.
As a special land use, you know, no reason not to think that if they meet all those requirements, we wouldn't just routinely approve them and they could operate there as long as they wanted.
Yeah, and some of, there are limited sites, again, because they can't take up required parking, they can't do, there's a lot of things that a transient merchant can't do outside the CBD. So you'll see that they're repetitive at a few sites around town, but I think the reason they were allowed outside of the CBD was that outside the CBD, you actually have private property for them to occur on.
Right.
They can't, they can't occur in the right-of-way. You can't set one up on Rochester Road, you can't set one up on Woodward in the parking, you can't set-
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goddick?
Would you be able to set it up in the right-of-way in a special event permit?
Again, that's totally, well, it's a totally different, and special events don't comply with a lot of things.
So if, for example, some of these people that were here tonight wanted to, once a month, turn Fourth Street into something they would have, something where they actually are in the right-of-way, they'd have to put together a plan, get the lease by and put that in front of the city commission as a special event and it wouldn't, we wouldn't see it at all?
That's correct. If it was a, if it was a special event, you wouldn't see it. The city commission may see it if it's a brand-new request. There are costs associated with a special event permit. If you take up public parking, metered parking, if you close the street, you're paying for those costs, this part of your event. So they're not free.
Thanks.
Mr. Casada?
All right. Couple of things before I make some comments. I personally do not, I think the party who makes an assertion has the burden of proving it. We heard people say, oh, you're going to ruin our business, you're going to take business away from downtown restaurants if you have the food trucks. I don't think that was shown. I'm not considering that at all, just so everybody in the audience knows. That's not a factor to me. I also wonder why we would have this only for people who have a liquor license, because if somebody had a enterprise that served ice cream or some other specialty, I don't know why, if they would meet all these requirements for a nice-looking facility that passed muster, why they would have to have a liquor license? So that's one aspect of the ordinance that I question and I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. Because if we like food trucks, if we think food trucks are going to help make things sparkle and generate interest, why do you have to have a liquor license if you meet all the other requirements? So I'll say those two things. As I read this ordinance, what I understand is if you're going to get a special land use, you got to have a 10-foot setback from all driveways or, I should read it here, driveways, public sidewalks, utility boxes, faults, ramps, stuff like that, you have to have the truck on a hard paved surface. So I got to ask Mr. Twing, what do you, why is that there? Because there probably are some occasions where that might not be the case.
Oh, well, it's mirroring another provision in the ordinance. Anywhere you're parking a motorized vehicle, under the current ordinance, requires it to be on a hard surface. You can't park on a gravel driveway, you can't park a vehicle on a dirt area. So there's already provisions that address that. It was just specifically identified here as kind of a repeat.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what comes to mind is if somebody had, like there's a, there's a, there's an empty lot right now across from Mr. Bee's, as a matter of fact, that's dirt, and if somebody wanted to pull a special land use for a couple of years while they're waiting to develop their project and they wanted to set up a food truck, they might want to do it. Maybe we don't want them to do it if we don't pave it, but this came to my mind, that maybe-
Well, understand, you can't just run a food truck on an empty lot under this ordinance. It has to be on a premise with another business activity and in this case, with a liquor license. So you can't just take a vacant lot, put a food truck on it.
Okay, fair enough, but that was something I thought of. And by the way, just, I did a little investigation, somebody mentioned Ferndale, they mentioned Fleet, so I got a question for you and then I did go and talk to the people at Fleet. So my question, I heard from the audience that- So my question, I heard from the audience that, that they allow food trucks to supplement the distilleries in Ferndale. Did we, is there an ordinance, does anybody know? Do we look at their ordinances? I'm just curious. It looks like we looked at Portland, Oregon, did we look at Ferndale?
I think we looked at several. I mean, I, I won't, I don't know that we looked specifically at Ferndale's.
Okay, well, when I went and talked, that was interesting, because they don't fit any of this. Fleet, first of all, they are an old restaurant, they have a kitchen, and they serve out of their kitchen, and they have indoor seating, and they own their own food trucks. So a couple of those food trucks are their own food trucks, and they run the food trucks out there, and they invite people in there. But they have a nice setup. It's something that probably would meet this ordinance, you know? It's got nice, you know, fencing and landscaping and things like that. And it looks like a permanent place. They just have food trucks there. So, but the underlying issues that we have here is not the case, because they're, they're their own food trucks, and they have a kitchen, just for your information. I think when I, a couple of things about the ordinance. I was a little puzzled by the way we're going to determine parking. Transient merchants have 251 parking for 250 square feet of usable floor area or exterior sales area. And then you've got that sales area, including any tables and seedings. I'm not sure what that means. That's the only time sales, sales area shows up in the ordinance. Does that mean an area that the seats are in? Or all, what, how do you do that? And what about parking? What are you counting when you're doing that?
Well, parking's not going to apply to the CBD, number one, because the CBD is exempt. However, we had to cover the fact that this now would apply to the other district's neighborhood business and general business. So the parking requirement would add to it. Very similar to sidewalk cafes or outdoor seasonal display areas. Those add to your parking count, even though you may not use them all the time. You'll have employees, so you'll have the space of the food truck, and then you'll have your defined seating area.
Okay, I would, I would, I would suggest that that get looked at a little bit, because a sales area for Christmas trees, I figure, we can figure that. A sales area for a food truck, I'm not sure what that is, except where the people are sitting. I would just raise it as, as something that should be looked at.
Well, if you're looking at 77107, the table parking, the, the first part up there that's in black, where it's struck and out, where it says transient merchants is struck out, and then it says temporary and transient outdoor sales.
That's the new phrase.
The black part of that is the existing provisions. So those already exist for transient merchants.
Right, right.
So we're not changing it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
No, but, but I'm just saying that I'm not sure that that exterior sales area phrase works for the food trucks. That's all I'm saying. I just raised it as an issue.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing?
Again, this is a recommendation to the City Commission. It's an ordinance amendment. It would change the zoning ordinance. If, you can recommend for, you can recommend against, you can recommend revisions. As you've done, you can think about it some more and refer it back to staff for other revisions or input. Other than the one change I suggested earlier, we've presented it, we're looking for what you want us to do with it.
Mr. Casada?
Well, I have, I have two other changes. One, I would strike the liquor license requirement. The other one, just to throw this out, if we're worried about it, we could put a sunset provision in. Could make it, you know, last a year or two years, and see who bites on it and what they do with it, if anybody does. So those are two things I would consider as well.
A sunset on the ordinance amendment?
Yeah.
You really can't sunset it. You'd have to remember, we'd flag it and strike it out in two years.
We could tie a little ribbon on our finger. Just a thought, if people are worried about it.
Any other discussion? Is there any motion?
Well, I would, I would move to recommend the ordinance be recommended to the City Commission.
Can I, can I, I guess, sorry to interrupt, but I assume you're referring to 7742 when you say strike the liquor license portion?
77, duh, 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 duh. It's 7742, right.
So if you simply strike that, it's any facility without a kitchen? Is that your intent? Any, any operation that doesn't have a kitchen can have a food truck?
I'm guessing I'm wondering if I even want to have a kitchen restriction on it. I mean-
No, but it's saying without.
Yeah, I think that liquor license is very restrictive. I mean-
So if I'm running a clothing store, I can stick a food truck out downtown?
I'm not sure that's a horrible idea, if you can, if you can set it up the right way.
I just wanted to make sure what your intent was.
I mean, we, we're trying to foment some creativity, but at the same time, we want good design. We don't want it to look junky. So if they meet the criteria, and there are, I think these are, there are some, I agree with the audience. There's some restrictive parts. You've got the screening, you've got the paving, you've got the setbacks, and the other operational issues.
So is there still a motion, Mr. Casada?
I think Mr. Godek wanted to pipe up, and I'm certainly happy to yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. Godek, Chair. I guess, I, I wouldn't support at this time such a motion that would take away the liquor license intent of the ordinance. I see this as a step possibly heading in that direction, but I, I think this would be a good interim step to keep it, keep that portion of it as is. If anything, I, I wouldn't mind making it a little less onerous in terms of the setback requirements. I guess I'd have to understand better. I, I know we kind of do that for safety reasons, so that we have sightline issues, so people don't get put in harm's way. But those are my thoughts right now, I'm sorry.
Ms. Douglas?
So usually, at this table, we are making decisions based on set parameters. And the question is, you know, does the business meet those parameters? Or do our criteria give us the flexibility to allow them to do something even if it's not spelled out in a, in the ordinance? This is kind of different. I mean, this is a, this is an artistic decision, as, in, in many ways. And I sort of feel like I'd like our econo, the city's economic development people weighing in on this. I mean, if food trucks, food trucks are cool and trendy, and, I mean, Ann Arbor has them, Ferndale has them, I think they're an interesting trend, and maybe worth considering, if done in a way that still protects the businesses that have invested in our community over the years. But I guess, without some sort of reason behind it, I kind of just don't know where this is coming from. And so I'm sort of disinclined to endorse the ordinance at this point. I mean, we've, I've said at this table many times, somebody will come to us and want to put a gas centation on a corner, and the owner of the gas station on the opposite corner says, you know, comes in and doesn't want that gas station there. And my response there is, well, we're not the competition police. But that's within a set of parameters, a set of, you know, zoning standards and criteria and guidelines. Whereas this, as I say, is, is a different animal coming before us as the Planning Commission. And I guess I'm just not quite ready to take that leap and approve or recommend this ordinance, really in its form, or even with some of the changes that Mr. Casada has suggested, to take that forward to the City Commission.
Mr. Casada?
I'm just going to say, this is not just the Central Business District, though. I just want to make sure everybody understands that these new rules for the food trucks would apply on Woodward, and they would apply, you know, out on Campbell Road if there was a site. So if somebody wanted to have a food truck set up, and they were clever and ambitious enough to do it, and they did a good job of it, I, I kind of think it should be allowed. But, so it's not just Central Business District.
But it's still, sorry, it's still, is it an economic development strategy on our part? Is this something we want for our city? Is this something we're going to hang our hat on, or not? And I'm not ready to hang my hat on it yet.
Well, I'm going to chime in here. I agree with Ms. Douglas. I think this is, this is an interesting concept. I think there's a lot of really good pieces to this, but I have, I have a lot of questions, more questions than I'm ready to make a decision on at this time. I appreciate the effort behind this. But I, too, would like to understand what the vision for the city is from our team, not just the Planning Commission, but our team, which includes Mr. Twing, and the Economic Development Director, and the City Manager, and even members of the Commission. Because this is going to affect the look and feel of Royal Oak in many different ways, and not just a couple of businesses, which quite frankly, I, although I, I appreciate they're here and appreciate your comments, I'm, I'm very puzzled as to how you're going to fit a food truck to enhance your establishment. That's a side issue. I understand your plight. But this is a decision that's going to affect many other businesses and properties, and I, not one that I take lightly. Anytime you enact an ordinance or recommend an ordinance to a commission, I think is a serious business. So I, I'd like to, I think we should take some more time. And I'd, I'd like to understand, too, what the greater vision is. Mr. Kloster?
Yeah, I, I just want to echo some of the comments that I have concern recommending this amendment to the ordinance. Policy tends to drive behavior, and behavior responds to policy. And the behavior that I see as a response to this policy is proposals for small buildings with large areas of surface parking in order to have small establishments with liquor licenses that then have food trucks on them, which I don't think is the fabric that we're trying to establish in the Central Business District. The provisions that are in 7769 that kind of delineate some of the special things required for food trucks are already in place for transient or outdoor sales that would be allowed in other business districts. So this kind of delineation of what's allowed with a food truck really is in response to allowing them in the Central Business District, so that we can be very specific as to what kind of transient sales are allowed in the Central Business District. Then I really, I'm, I'm struggling with a policy that encourages land development like that in the Central Business District.
Thank you, Mr. Kloster. So it's a pleasure of the Commission.
I just did a head count.
No flies on you.
So I, I, I'm not going to waste my time with a motion. I would say that I think that, to the extent that these downtown businesses, or other businesses not in, in the Central Business District, are, have this event permit available to them, if they're not doing it all the time, I think that would continue. I think this would be more, like, you couldn't have Fleet in Royal Oak, I don't think, without this ordinance, if I, if I understand correctly. I don't know if we, I mean, we don't want a Fleet in our, in our city. But if we do, this seems appropriate.
Ms. Douglas?
I just wondered, do we, if, is no action, is no decision a decision, Mr. Twing? Do we need to take action to down this proposal?
Well, if you, if you take no action, I, I'm not sure what I'll do with it other than put it on the table and leave it there. So if I don't have direction, again, this is not a staff-driven item, so unless you tell me to do something with it, it'll go on the shelf and never see the light of day.
I, I, I think, I mean, I, I like the idea that we're talking about this. I think food trucks are good. I like food trucks. I just don't know if I have enough information to make a decision on establishing a new set of policies for the, or a policy for the city.
Again, what I will say, there are current provisions that allow similar activities under a special event permit, so there's, there's that currently, it does exist. The transient merchant ordinance allows them outside the CBD, so that those property owners could make proposals for transient operations as they have in the past. So those things aren't really changing, and they're still there.
So we can have food trucks in, in Royal Oak, just this-
You've, you've got food trucks in Royal Oak.
Okay.
It's just that I think you'd have a lot more of them if you opened the door downtown. And as Mr. Kloster said, I'm not sure that's where you really want them, given on the fabric that you've been trying to build. You don't have a lot of, of private property in the CBD. Most of it's in the public right-of-way. I'm not sure how Fleet, Fleet operates or does, doesn't. But there's not a lot of, of private land in the CBD.
I have a quick question, then, Ms. Douglas. So, so we have quite a bit of construction going on out here. Would this ordinance allow the, the land developer to bring in a food truck for his or her construction workers? And let it sit there, if this ordinance were to pass?
No, not the way it's written.
Okay.
Because he doesn't have a liquor license.
Because he doesn't, okay, but if he, but if we took that out, then he could bring a food truck in and have breakfast, lunch, and dinner available?
Again, the way it's also written is it defined as a food truck as an accessory use to another activity on the premises. Until he opens that, there's no activity in.
So construction site doesn't? Okay, okay. Ms. Douglas, sorry.
Would it help you to, I mean, a, a, a big part of this is just separating out food trucks from the current way we treat them, which is temporary and transient businesses. Would it help you to, for us to advance this, these changes without the CBD provision, if only just to clarify the difference between food trucks and other transient uses?
If you're not going to include the CBD, I don't need you to do anything, because I think the current ordinance covers transient activities outside the CBD. The only reason that we made these provisions was to allow food trucks, a single type of transit operation, to occur within the CBD. Right now, you can't run any transit operations within the CBD.
Okay.
Zero.
Go ahead, Tim.
Mr. Godek?
I agree with the comments by Mr. Kloster. I really didn't look at it from how it could be used for possible future development, where properties would be looked at for cement space for a truck rather than developing it for what we have as a pretty good plan in the CBD. So I, I, I kind of agree with that, but at the same time, I was thinking, a few of us don't feel like we have enough information, and we want economic development people to weigh in and stuff like that. So I wouldn't mind necessarily holding this over for another looksee and getting those concerns and information brought forward. So, yeah.
And, and again, Tim, nothing's preventing some of these current businesses who do not have a kitchen, of bringing in food. They can cater food in for their clientele?
To the inside?
Yes, they can do that, okay. They don't need a special license to do that, if the food's prepared by a facility that prepares food?
Health Department would be the only one I would know that might have some say in what they're doing.
Okay. Mr. Casada?
Last question. This entire food H, it's 77069H, that entire section is new. So if we, if somebody wanted to have a food truck currently, they're not subject to, to, to these provisions.
Which section are you on, Mr. Casada?
Correct, I'm just wondering, because, because Tim said that if, if- Correct, I'm just wondering because, because Tim said that if, if someone wanted to have a food truck now, they could do it, and I'm just wondering, but they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be subject to 77069H?
Yeah, but you've got to read the ordinance in its entirety in a sense, and if you read further up, you'll see that the section that deals with the CBD says 7742 is, food trucks will be a special land use in the CBD, um, subject to those provisions and the requirement for a liquor license without a kitchen. If you look at the other zoning districts, those statements don't apply.
Well, they, right, this, this is what I'm getting at. They, the words "and" food trucks and the entire section H there isn't in the ordinance right now, is it?
That's correct.
So, are, so?
That's because food trucks are treated as transient merchants right now.
Okay, but you've been more specific. I just want to make sure, I think you've been, maybe I'm wrong, I think you've been more specific about what requirements the food truck operator has to meet in, in 77069H than it was before.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's an improvement.
Very correct, yes.
Just me.
But I would also say generally that probably outside the CBD, there'd be several spots where they could meet these standards.
Yes. I just, I'm saying I think that provision is beneficial, if we're going to allow food trucks, I think that's a beneficial thing and that's why I would be in favor of it.
Mr. Twing, do we need a motion if we want to postpone this to the next meeting?
I would, I would make a motion to postpone it and direct us to whatever you want. If you want some additional information, I'd be happy to try and address it.
Okay.
You know, if, but I need, I need direction on it. You could also make a motion if you, if you're against it, to recommend against it to the commission, like I said, or you can, but yeah, if you want to postpone it, I would like a motion, because if you don't do anything, it's just going to sit on the table.
Okay. Mr. Goddard?
I was close to a motion and as far as direction goes, what, I keep going back to what Mr. Kloster said, if, if I'm a potential developer in CBD, I'd look for a parking lot, put up a small, as box I can, and produce something that the new license laws in the state of Michigan allow me to do and then use this ordinance to put food trucks on it. That's, I take a concern that I, I would like the, someone in staff capable of looking at that kind of planning issue with this type of ordinance. You know, if, if we were to table that and bring that forward, is, is the economic development master guru in, in, in the city able to? That's what I'm trying to get for a future meeting.
Mr. Kasada and then Ms. Douglas.
Just real quick, I, I would just say, I would be surprised if somebody would take a piece of downtown property and use it for that use on an ongoing basis. My suggestion was they might use it temporarily while they were waiting to get their money for a development. I would be surprised if that was the highest and best use of a downtown piece of property. So I don't think we have to worry about that, quite frankly.
Ms. Douglas.
Mr. Twing, if we turn this down completely, is there a limit on when it might be brought back before us? That is, if, if the economic development staff had a case to make, I mean, rather than, than, I mean, you can't, you can't postpone it, you have to table it to a date certain, which I don't think we want to do. If we vote it down, does it have to wait a year before we can bring it back up again?
Again, you're, you're providing a recommendation to the city commission, so if you voted to have it rejected for a variety of reasons, it would float up to the city commission in its current format with a recommendation of denial.
I see.
Then, then the city commission would act on it, either agree with you and deny it, or act on it and approve it, or send it back for modification.
Send it back to the commission?
Send it back to you for modification.
In that case, I'm going to make a motion to not recommend this to the city commission.
Support.
To not recommend it?
To not recommend it.
But it still goes to the city commission, Mr. Twing? Okay.
Because then, if there is a case to be made, if there is an economic development strategy, if this is thought through, staff will have an opportunity, I mean, they can put it on the commission agenda whenever they please, at, at the point where staff has made a case for it or chosen not to make a case for it.
Right, and again, I, I just want to clarify, this is not a staff-driven recommendation.
I understand that.
Okay, so staff is not going to make a case for this?
Oh, okay, then so be it.
So just to maybe reword that, to, you're making a motion, you said to not recommend, but it's a recommendation to, to not pass this, to not move forward on this.
We can't, it'll go forward to the city commission anyway.
But you're recommending against passing it, is what you're saying?
Recommended denial.
Recommended denial, okay. Okay, there's been a motion by Ms. Douglas and supported by Mr. Kloster to recommend denial. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I just want to be clear about the strategy here, to be 100% clear. So by taking this action, the city commission has to look at this. Is that what I understand?
Either way.
Either way.
Well, if we, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to go to them.
It has to go to them. If we, if we do something else, like say we're going to do nothing, then it won't, it won't go up there. But if we, if we take this action, they'll get a chance to discuss.
Going there.
I, I understood that if it was a no, if we took no action, it wouldn't go there. You'd say, put dust on the show.
If you did nothing, then it's going to sit here. I don't, you have to make a recommendation to change the zoning ordinance to the commission. Your recommendation is to deny this.
But whatever we recommend, it goes up.
Right.
Mr. Goddard?
So when it goes up, it's pretty much going to go up in its current format. You're not going to do much more with this.
I'm probably going to strike the one sentence that I would recommend to striking as staff, but other than that, I'm not changing anything.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I guess I, I won't support that because I thought we could get more information brought in front of us so that the city commission would have more information to act on when they find a look at it. It's pretty much going to go up that chain as you see it right now.
What I will, what I will say though, I mean, the question has come up, recommendations from the economic development specialists or, or planning staff or myself, having written ordinances for 30 years, someone will find some way to use it in some fashion to do whatever. So speculation is not something I want to get into as a staff member, is will somebody take this ordinance and do something with it that you don't like?
I can understand that.
That will happen.
I can understand that point of view, but I, I think it's significant enough to where someone that, like a business manager, economic development, might be able to think in less concrete terms when it comes to that kind of stuff. Because I, I agree, it's an important decision for the city and the reason I'm not supporting it is because I don't think we are considering all the possibilities. And it, it's not easy for staff to do something like that or for anybody to do something like that, but if it's done the right way and, and some of the possibilities that were talked about is not likely, you can't cover them all, but I, I guess I wanted to look in some more of the corners anyway.
Mr. Twing, will anybody on your staff or the economic development person or the commission have a full transcribed set of minutes? Will they know that, unless they're, they're not watching this, will they know our discussion points?
But we'll, we'll put bullet points in the, in the commission letter. They will also get everything you've gotten in your packet.
Okay.
But they'll be directed, if they're interested in seeing the dialogue, to watch the video. We won't transcribe them.
Okay.
It won't be verbatim discussion.
And obviously it'll be helpful to have Ms. Douglas at the table when, when or if it does go to the commission, because that, that'll help. Any other discussion?
But any of us who were, who were interested could show up at the commission and speak, I would think.
Yep. Will this, well, you could, will this be a public hearing at the commission?
No, it'll be part of the public agenda, but it won't be a public hearing.
So you can, there'll be public comments at the meeting though that a commissioner, a planning commissioner could make?
Be up, it'll be up to the, yeah, they'll have public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
When the agenda item comes up, it'll be up to the commission whether they accept comment at that time, but generally they don't.
That's what I thought, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Douglas, supported by Mr. Kloster, to recommend denial, and this does go to the city commission. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
So we have three to two. Motion is approved to recommend denial. Okay, thank you, Mr. Twing. All right, next item, this is new business. This is a site plan to co-locate a wireless communication facility in the existing building at the Royal Oak Fire Station number two, at 31100 Goodwood Avenue. That's on the corner of 13 and Woodward.
This is in front of you. The property is owned, one family residential. In that district, the wireless communication facilities under the ordinance are required to have site plan approval by the planning commission. Very simply, the proposal is to add a tower to the top of the fire station, I believe based on the plans, and they're moving slow on me here, but the top of the tower would be some 40, 40 feet, six inches above the grade line or, but the tower itself would be about 12 feet above the roof line of the fire station. It wouldn't be enclosed, I was trying to get to the elevation, show you that. It's basically this, if you look at the screen, this equipment here. And again, simply because of the zoning it's in and the requirements the ordinance does require site plan approval, our standard contingencies are all the items that are simply listed. You will also see in the packet that the city commission has approved the, an agreement with Spirit to put this facility on this location.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any other questions for Mr. Twing, Ms. Douglas?
I move approval of the site plan.
There's a motion to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Goddard. Any discussion on this? Now seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Approved.
Did you want to talk?
Not really. I got what I came for, and then there was one, so, you know.
Okay.
It's very similar to the other, just a much smaller scale of what's done with the other fire station. Literally a big chimney on it with the antennas inside it.
Thank you. Thank you for your money.
Okay, um, other, under other business, we have the five-year review of master plan. This was at the last meeting. My memory is Mr. Goddard.
It's been the last two, but that's okay.
Ms. Douglas actually postponed this, so.
Yeah, basically, what we're looking to have the planning commission do is, based on the joint meeting with the city commission, staff prepared an outline or resolution of kind of a targeted approach to the master plan rather than a comprehensive rewrite of it. And those items are listed in the memo in front of you. I would, and then the first part of that was that the planning commission had already passed a resolution back in September of 2017 that went up to the city commission, and the commission took action on it, and we were gearing up to rewrite an entirely new master plan. And then as part of the budget process, there was some additional discussion to city commission. And then, then there was a discussion about having a joint meeting. Since both bodies have now appeared to have taken or want to take a more targeted approach, staff's looking for, number one, to rescind that first resolution from September of 2017, then adopt a second resolution that identifies those targeted areas. And we've suggested both of those resolutions. Resolution one would rescind the prior one. Resolution two would be a new one based on what we took as notes and outline. If, if the planning commission takes this action today, then we would take your resolution to the city commission and have them act accordingly as well. So we're just trying to clean up what's occurred so that we can start the process towards distributing and preparing an RFP, having the commission select on someone to start the master plan. Right now, we're kind of in limbo because we had one initial action and that seems to have changed the focus. So if that's, I'll, I'll stop with that as kind of a background on where we're at. Obviously, if the planning commission wants to modify the resolution or the bullet points, clearly we're, weren't happy to have that occur at this point too, but.
So two motions. Motion to rescind and motion to adopt the resolution?
Second, I don't know. No, if you, if you wanted to stick with what you did before and go back, I, I mean, I, you could do that, but I, that's not the direction I understand you're going in.
There are motion to rescind.
Can we make some comments first?
Sure.
So there, while the motions are what the motions are, the introductory language on the first and second pages, I think, is what's going to drive the creation of an RFP, and I wanted to weigh in on a couple of the elements here. One is that in paragraph, under the heading, Planning Commission Recommendations on Master Plan Update and Funding, the last, I guess, sentence of that says, discusses the topics that are to be covered, one of which says housing and residential densities. I don't know that it's just densities that we're looking at. I think it's the, it's, um, land use, that is, how we are allocating land that we have that may be in transitional status and what kinds of housing we offer. I, I would like to see us consider ways to make sure housing is affordable in our community and suitable to people as they age. So the discussion of housing shouldn't just be about densities. Secondly, I would like to see that discussion incorporate urban design. And I know that the physical condition of buildings and how they look is a, is an element of zoning, but our zoning is derived from our master plan, and if we don't have it in our master plan, it's not going to wind up in the zoning. I sense that, I mean, there are people in Royal Oak who say they don't want Royal Oak to change, that they're disconcerted by change. And in my opinion, a lot of that has to do with changing the way Royal Oak looks, not necessarily how it functions. And I think the way Royal Oak looks defines our city, and it's no secret that I have disagreed with a couple of developments in this community where on a highly urban corner, we found a building located set back from the corner with parking in front. I don't think that looks like Royal Oak. And there are other things about our city that, I mean, especially in, I mean, I think we've, we've done this in residential areas, but I don't know that we've done it in, on, in commercial areas or on main streets or so forth. At any rate, I think the master plan should look at how Royal Oak looks. Furthermore, on page two, where we talk about the process, the very top of the page says conduct a public meeting, parentheses, perhaps more meetings. I guess I'd like to call that community engagement, not public meetings, and encourage the consultants that we seek to bring us novel ways of community engagement. Public meetings may be the answer, but they may not be the only answer. I would further ask that under one, bullet point one, two, three, after bullet point three, we specify another community engagement endeavor that will introduce the recommendations, the recommended changes to the master plan to the public, and then we not just trot those into a city commission meeting and, and, you know, have a public hearing attended by the people who attend city commission meetings. I want to know that. I want to know that people have an opportunity to weigh in on this, to look at our plans and to give us their feedback before we take it to the city commission.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Anyone else? Mr. Kloster?
Just to comment on that, there are consultants that are very good at stirring up community engagement and they're not necessarily the same consultants that are very good at doing master plans. It might be worthwhile to look at a multiple-pronged consultant engagement approach that gets the community involved. Because I've been involved in several of these and it's the typical people who show up. It's the five or six people that come to planning commission meetings. It's the five or six people that have a bone to pick about something. And it's not necessarily a good barometer of the community. So, I think the community engagement component is going to be very pivotal in getting high-quality results that are community-focused.
Mr. Goddard?
I was just going to ask Commissioner Douglas to explain her first point on including more than just housing density. I, I, can you clarify that a little bit?
Well, obviously, much of Royal Oak, you know, the housing, the neighborhoods are what they are and those aren't going to change. But there are areas where we have options as to how we zone that land and what, how physically the buildings are configured. If we're just talking about density, we forego the opportunity to talk about purpose and about accommodating people with different needs. So, it's not, I mean, we've dealt here at this table with the density of, for example, apartment buildings. And I want the discussion to extend beyond that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Casada?
Well, I, I agree with everything Commissioner Douglas said. The only thing I would say is we can make those changes. I don't think it's going to make that much difference, honestly, because once you get into it, you're going to have the opportunity to talk about it and it'll be driven by the iterative process. I also wonder, when I hear Mr. Kloster's comment, who is going to make those decisions? That's a city commission decision. Who's going to look at the, who's going to write the RFP, look at the RFP, recommend the, on, on the RFP?
Well, generally, it'll be the, staff will write the RFP. It'll go to the commission for, if, particularly if they want to have input on what it says.
City commission.
The city commission. I can bring it here as well, but the city commission will be the body that has to enter into a contract with whoever selected to do it. They'll have to allocate the funds to do it. So, it will end up the city commission meeting. If you want to see a draft of the RFP at the planning commission, I don't have any issue with providing it to you and, and going from there.
That's sort of what I'm thinking, that when we could have some input in it at the time it goes, before it goes out.
Right.
I don't, I think this is, this is the inception here.
And I don't, and I don't think it's going to be difficult to wordsmith. Housing and residential densities is part of this resolution. If you want to add some other words to it. The only comment I would make on the, in, in using, conducting public engagement sessions or whatever the term is, is fine. I just want to be clear, we will have to hold a particular public hearing.
Of course, but there's public hearings and then there is community engagement.
Right.
Mr. Twing, the RFP process is variable. When it goes to the commission, in, let's say there's six different firms that apply and the commission likes three, is there often an interview process where you bring in the, the competing firms and, and then a few members of staff and maybe a couple of members of the commission?
Well, we could even do the, if you wanted to, as part of the RFP, it could be the review process would include staff and members of the planning commission and the city commission on it, that's fine. If you want, if you wanted to spend time on the interview process, that's fine.
I think that's a good idea.
Would, it would have to be three or less because of the quorum issue, issue?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to necessarily have to post it and open it up for everyone, but.
No, I understand, that makes sense.
So, I'm not sure that you could use the mayor and Commissioner Douglas plus other commissioners.
Right, because they're part of the planning commission, okay.
But we could work on who that is.
Okay, well, that's helpful. I think that, go ahead. Anything else? Okay, so then we, we do need two motions. Would someone like to make the first motion to rescind?
Motion to rescind the planning commission's resolution from September 2017.
For Mr. Goddard, any discussion on this one? Not seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to rescind has been approved and then we have a resolution number two. Is there a motion on this? Someone, move by Ms. Douglas, supported by?
Support.
Mr. Casada, any discussion on this? Not seeing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This passes also. Okay, good, thank you, Mr. Twing. Last item, Mr. Germent.
Motion to adjourn?
Support? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.